And it's signed by whoever wrote it. Dude, Mayor Daryl.
It's great.
There's like five twenty-five or something.
Oh, yeah.
Terrible.
My son's best friend growing up was Christmas and he died because his dad was in a car.
Yeah.
He found out and Patrick couldn't see how it was left by.
Really?
No, not at all.
Not the way I should.
Got a little stiffer worse than right back. I'm going to see a orthopedic doctor myself tomorrow.
How you feeling? No?
I used to feel sore on Sunday.
And it matters worse. I mean, I've got a, I guess a spider bite laid in my shoulder. That sounds like a damn. I don't know. It's just, I'm running around and it's a boost. You know, it's been, it's been right all, all over and everywhere. And I'm so, I'm stiff. I'm moving. And I still can't wake up. I'm much above the high. And I had to pass this one through and told him, I'm going to go from this home. Just like I can figure out.
What's it going?
Hi.
Is Dara finally answering your email?
I don't know. We haven't, we haven't communicated lately.
All this big deal and then it's like, my phone is silent.
Since he told me I have to go to jail, I have to serve twelve months for waking him up, so.
Send me an email before six in the morning. You're going to jail.
What are you answering for?
Because you're waking me up.
Well.
Actually, I am already awake.
Everyone says that. Six of days half gone, man.
It's a process, you know. It's not fun. I, you're both, it's my friend.
It's a sad situation.
Leo Doyle always sends his emails about four in the morning and Dave Roberts follows.
It's amazing what trickles I'm waiting.
We were bad at the game.
Oh, yes. Exactly.
Connection light in here.
Let me squeeze it behind you.
Hello, Patrick.
It doesn't do it until.
Hello.
Somebody must be kicking something.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. It's going well. I was out trying to get my steps in. I'm sorry.
Good evening, all.
Get my steps.
How are you?
See, the red has to get to. That's great.
Really? Um, what? Oh, uh. Did you have a? Oh, okay. So we're going back to it.
Yeah.
Good. It looks good.
How are you, Brett? I didn't see you come in.
I snuck in behind you, Chuck. All right, buddy.
Sneaky Pete, huh?
That's it. I got one. And I came.
Hello, girls. How are you?
Yeah, how are you?
Feeling? You carried a complete project for schools?
Yes.
Very fine. Uh, what school?
Jackson.
Jackson? Very good. And let me guess, AP Government?
No. CCP Poly Sci.
Okay, Poly Sci. Okay. That's even better.
Yeah.
How, how cool is that? Do you need your form signed by one of us?
Yes, please.
You want the mayor to do it or the president of council?
Whatever works.
Whatever works. I thought the answer would be the mayor.
The mayor, of course.
That's okay. Come on over.
He signs his, beat Jackson.
Oh, my God.
I'm in trouble now, aren't I? Oh, my God. Tella? Okay. Nice to have you here.
Thank you.
Sure. That's my short meter. Hopefully that'll give you more than points, okay? And, uh, so what interest you're enjoying this time? Just something that you like, but try?
Yeah, we just kind of, I don't know. I just kind of.
Yes, I did.
Did they get permit?
Okay, they did.
Oh, did they? They even poured a new driveway.
This place, they exist anywhere. Should I put the?
They added on.
No, I would be, I'm only getting in trouble.
I think it's great that Jackson always sends her kids over here.
How about that? Isn't that wonderful? Okay.
That's our, we'll keep that on the down low.
We'll keep that on the, on down low. Okay.
Is that the older one?
Uh, hey, Jamie?
Yeah.
I can't remember. Did we say anything about the email last time?
Uh, no, because we said we were gonna donate, okay?
Do you want to report that?
Sure, yeah, because I wrote down a couple of things for it, so, yeah. That was a great event, so.
Were you gonna say anything about, uh?
Yeah.
Bench going in?
You know.
The dedication.
Great. Thank you. What am I looking for?
Welcome aboard.
I fought it, but I'm still not used to these. It's covered in between.
Are you talking about glasses?
Just reading glasses.
When did you get them?
Uh, yesterday.
Oh, right. Give a headache?
What, what, what range are they?
I have no idea.
What do you mean you have? When you get reading glasses, you have to know the level.
I feel like they should be here, though. Like, if my nose is bigger, it would be good.
Well, you look down. You know that.
Hello, Patrick.
But if I do that, oh, okay.
Like, you don't look straight out.
Quite a bit.
Like, you have to use, you know.
If actually through the lens.
Like, that's where it is.
But it's, yeah, it is like better down here.
Right.
Yeah, if my nose was like down here, it would be better. If I can do that.
Welcome to life of readers. Yeah, that's.
Somebody's gotta get him like a change for next week.
Wait, you know, okay.
I need the Monopoly.
There you go.
You know when I pull out, like, I don't live.
It's a monocle.
We're a monocle.
Yeah, that would not work for me.
But those, I know people who like.
Oh, you guys, we do the best. They're all back at my phone.
That is a good idea.
Like, look at that. Anytime I need them. Like, I would just take my purse and find them. Yeah, people are like, okay, Grandma. Okay, Grandma Claus.
Getting the Monopoly.
And then if I lose them, like, there are good times when I lost them out. I about die when I lose this.
Yes.
My credit cards, they don't matter. My meters.
Well, yeah.
I need them. The other day, we were in Chicago and, um.
To figure out what credit card deal.
Exactly. But we were in Chicago and I was ordering the blue.
Blue Momatis, my favorite place. I was just gonna ask.
She ever got abused? Doesn't hold for now.
No.
Well, we were walking home late after the housekeeping, moving up in Old Town. And, uh, I went to the diner. So we stopped there and I'm ordering. They were the first one. And I was like, does not have the ice? And they're like, what? The ice. And a guy behind me, he's like, that's for the blue. And I was like, yeah, it's called the blue.
That helps better.
We love Blue Momatis. Katie will not let me go to Blue Momatis if I'm in Chicago. Yeah.
You get the original and then.
I just get the old pizza.
Yeah.
The pepperoni pizza.
Wait, the pepperoni? Because their original's.
Oh, you know what?
Like, that's his, like, thing.
You know what? One eight hundred route to go, they will send them to you anywhere in the contiguous forty-eight states overnight.
Really? Wow.
Not likely we've done that before.
Yeah, exactly. That must be expensive because.
Then we're gonna start.
A little porcelain, right? So, and then I'm a huge, um, Thai beef. So then I search the city for a Thai beef sandwich as, and.
Should I build a countdown in?
Big Al's was really good.
That's cool.
To start right off.
Should I build a cap, for future power one, should I build a countdown in that it comes down?
Yes. I like that.
Fun about it. Wait, that's so you know we're gonna do that.
It'll keep them focused.
You'll have a bunch of people. Actually be pretty cool.
Keeping them out of that. I have no idea.
Probably have to send them there. Bring in Alexa to my.
We could do the Jeopardy countdown.
I now call to order the city council meeting of September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two. The time is seven P M. Opening prayer, Jamie.
All right. Do you stand? Let us pray. Dear Lord, I pray that you guide us always. Satisfy the needs that need to be met during this meeting. Strengthen us as we make tough decisions. I pray that we will be like a well-watered garden, like a spring whose waters never fail. I pray that we will be fruitful. Father, please guide us so that this meeting can be productive. Let us be effective and decisive. Amen.
Let it lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Member Matheny?
Here.
Member Orr?
Here.
Member Shroya?
Here.
Member McLeister?
Here.
Member Revolt?
Here.
Member Warren?
Here.
Member Wyrick is absent, six present.
Motion to excuse Member Wyrick?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, may have a motion and a second to approve as presented the August twenty-twenty-two financial report.
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Question carries. At this time, members of the public wishing to address council may do so. Each speaker would grant a five minutes. Comments, comments shall be limited to legislative items appearing on tonight's agenda only. The rules for speaking and the speaker's time will appear on the screens. This will serve as the only warning for everyone in attendance. Any violation of the rules will result in removal from the premises. Again, please stay on topic and tonight is agenda only, please. Anyone wishing to address council tonight?
Are you speaking to? Are you speaking? My topic is on the council rules amendment.
Oh, please say your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. Maryam Baughman, three two zero Weber Avenue, Northeast, North Canton. I think we can all agree North Canton is a great place to live. There are neighborhoods with small, well-kept houses for retirees and young people looking for starter homes and neighborhoods with larger homes for those wishing to upgrade. Parks are so beautiful, including the new children's park. The swimming pool is a jewel for residents to enjoy. Two new schools are built to give our children state-of-the-art facilities to enhance an already superior education. There is the farmer's market, Memorial Day and birthday delight craze, and of course, the big race. Macy's Festival of Christmas tree lighting. Our streets have no potholes and snow removal is outstanding. The police department is resident friendly and does wonderful to keep our communities ultra-safe. The North Canton water department gives us safe, good-tasting water. New businesses are coming to our city, which means more tax dollars for the city and for the schools. All of these things need careful, ongoing monitoring and constant upgrading. Our current administration and council is doing a great job on this. Each council meeting has a lot of important business to discuss and legislate. Unfortunately, a few residents use council meeting public speaks to harass council members and criticize items unrelated to the meeting, mostly baseless allegations. All this takes time away from council members who have important decisions to discuss and legislate during the meetings. The solution compromise is to only have the public speak on agenda items twice a month and speak on anything on the even months. In the meantime, any concerns can be addressed, discussed anytime privately with administration or any council member. Contact information for the North is on the North Canton City website. Look around our city and decide for yourself whether the current council and administration is doing a good job. I sure think they are. I posted this on the North Canton Facebook site late this afternoon, and as of six twenty, I had nineteen people agree with me. I had two favorable comments. I had nothing negative. All public entities have rules for public speaks necessary to assure decorum and order. I feel that I'm representing myself and twenty-one other people when I stand up here and say, please vote for the council rules amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Anyone else wanting to address council tonight?
Chicago four and three oh seven Fairview Street, Southeast, North Canton, Ohio. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight because I didn't know you could speak. This has been turned into such a can of worms. Who knows when you can speak? Currently, it's, I don't know what it is. Four times a year is all I understand. And I guess you're getting ready to add an extra two times a year. Mr. Matheny and Mr. Orr have mentioned that it's too complicated. You don't know what, when you can plan on it, when you can't. I've been coming up here for twenty-two years. I'm a former councilman. I have followed all of this. I had no idea you could speak tonight. Somebody who were to have to drop in would not know anything regarding when you could speak, what you could speak about. This is wrong. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may?
Sure.
Item number six on the published agenda very plainly states recognition of the public. Legislation on the agenda only. So it is very clear, very plainly written.
Yeah.
Actually repeated it, so I don't know how that's.
There's no confusion.
And the first speaker spoke to what amendment she was speaking on.
Last call on, uh, speaking tonight. Moving on to old business. Can I, um, okay, we're gonna discuss, um, council rule twenty-six to start out with. Okay, so this is the, uh, rule that would get rid of the, uh, mandatory reading by title only, which I think.
I don't think that's it. It's, we still read by title only.
And the, the motion. Right, that's what I meant. Correct.
And the second, and the approval to read.
Correct.
We automatically read by title only.
Right. Yeah, so that would just be part of the process now, which I think we're all in agreement last time. Is, is there anything new or any other comments we'd wanna share about this?
Good idea.
Yep. I'll take a motion and a second to adopt.
So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. And going on to now rule thirty-six. So rule thirty-six would take the.
Seven.
Or thirty-seven, sorry.
Thirty-eight, am I?
Now thirty-eight, my bad. Just getting used to learning these glasses. Okay, so currently it is a quarterly, um, open topic speak. We, um, are admitting that to do even numbered ones, which would bring it to six times. Any discussion on this?
Yeah. Again, I will probably vote no on this, though it is better than what it was set out to be. I can appreciate that, but I would still be in favor of, you know, the non of the islands.
Leave it the way it is.
Leave it the way it is, correct. And I plan on probably revisiting this if it passes back in December or January when we start up again to see how it goes. I'm willing, you know, thank you for adding those extra couple of days, but I'm still against it.
At our last council meeting, regular council meeting, I think you all may remember that there was a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council requiring a committee report. Should a situation arise where we have constituents who have an important message, council reserves the right to suspend the rule on public speaking. So that option is always available to council should a situation arise outside its normal speaking structure. Good point. Yeah.
And we talked about that last week. We said we could always go to the president and the council and say the situation has occurred and.
You need a motion and a second.
Yep.
And four votes.
That's very willing.
And I don't think that's a particularly high standard.
No.
No.
Along those lines, I, I do appreciate the fact that there was some adjustment from quarterly. I feel that we should be here and residents should be able to speak about what's on their mind, uh, to be on the record. I still am a very strong advocate for once a month, at the first meeting of the month. It adds more consistency than even an odd month and where we're at now. So that's, I, I guess without saying anything else, that's where I stand. It would be nice to be once a month. I appreciate, uh, those that had adjusted and tried to compromise, uh, to get there. And we have to look at this body as one that needs to negotiate. We need to compromise, but we always need to look at what's best for the residents.
Yeah. If I had my druthers, we'd have an open mic every council meeting, no time limit. I think sometimes five minutes frankly is inadequate to lay out a good argument. But I think the fact of the matter is this, that we've had two individuals, Mr. Osborne and Mr. Tripp, who have willfully violated our rules. That's why this discussion is here. It came from only one location. And it's, I'm sad to say that those interruptions have done very little to contribute to public discourse and discussion of the issues before us. We can rap it. We can put lipstick on the pig if we wish. But the fact of the matter is, when we have one individual who admits on the record to coming to disrupt the meeting, that does not serve our community. The outbursts, the outbursts from the seats, the behavior at the podium, and I should note parenthetically, it's not necessarily the content, save that which has been slanderous and libelous, deserves our condemnation. As I've said before to the citizens who were here, you're either part of the solution or part of the problem. And if I don't believe that that conduct can be condoned at the end of the day. As has been pointed out by Mr. Orr, these are rules that will be visited again when the council next reorganizes or in the interim. They can be changed. But for now, let's be very clear about what's happened in this room. Attacks on personnel that are unwarned, they are slanderous and libelous. Our, our, our staff, our team, no bearing whatsoever on fact cannot go unanswered. I've been around this table for forty years, and I am very disappointed that we are at this point. But the responsibility rests with two individuals, Mr. Osborne and Mr. Tripp. And when that behavior discontinues, then I think it's council's prerogative to return to something far more liberal than what we've got now. And I would welcome, I think that's a good thing. But I think we've tried to compromise this thing. We've tried to look at it, if you look at the, if you look at the, if you look at the record, the fact of the matter is many times those individuals' comments add very little to public discourse, if anything. So, but again, and I wanna emphasize this for those people who are on tape. This is about behavior, not content, save that which is slanderous and libelous, which is explicitly prohibited in our rules. And I would remind everyone who's watching on the tape that many times these comments are prepared. They are premeditated. They're not spontaneous. It's inexcusable. I'm done.
Two quick things, Matt. I think, uh, another person that's highly involved in this also will be our council president. We started enforcing the rules. Why they weren't enforced years ago, I don't know, but he's starting to enforce the rules, which is gross. Thank you, man. Second, you were all probably copied on an email sent, uh, it was addressed to Mayor, Mayor Wilder and it was copied to several of you. I personally do not feel targeted whatsoever. And I never said those remarks. I don't feel targeted. If you know me any, if you, I challenge being targeted. Okay, so I wanna make that for the record. I never said that I felt targeted or anything of that nature. We're part of a team. Why do we target each other?
We're allowed to think differently.
Right.
Yes.
You know, I just wanted to throw out there that, um, you know, I agree with what you said earlier and I think both. and I think both Dave and Daryl added it in there. When behavior improves, I'll be the first one to say that maybe we should come back and revisit it. Now again, I think we're kind of close to the end of the year, so I think the logical time would be as we reorganize for next year. But I too didn't think that this is what I was going to have to be dealing with, you know, ten months into my first term of council. And I look forward to the point where we can go back, when, when discourse and behavior improves and we can go back to where it was, so, that's it.
Anyone else?
We have a, we have a motion to adopt this?
I was just going to follow up with, you know, we do bring the rules up several times a year.
This is what, the fourth or fifth time we've done so this year?
At least, I believe it's at least the fifth. So I'm not opposed to bringing them up in the future, but we have to see better behavior first. That being said, I'll take a motion and a second to adopt.
Second.
Can we do a roll call?
We can, yes.
Thank you.
Ben, could you call the roll?
Yes, sir.
Roll call vote, sorry.
Member Matheny?
No.
Member McLeaster?
Yes.
Member Warrin?
Yes.
Member Schrempf?
Yes.
Member Volp?
Yes.
Member Orr?
No.
Four in favor, two opposed.
Okay. All right, moving on.
You need to call if the motion passed.
Yes, sir, the motion carries. Ben, would you please read ordinance fifty-nine dash twenty-two?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to release AMC Land Company Limited from performance bond obligations established by a commercial bond as authorized by ordinance fifty-two dash twenty-one.
Okay, so this is to release the obligation. We've talked about this, this is the third reading, there is no new information on this. Any comments, questions, very, very straightforward.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And Ben, would you please read ordinance sixty dash twenty-two?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to enter into an agreement with AMC Land Company Limited, thereby accepting its maintenance bond to guarantee certain maintenance improvements in the Monticello Phase Eight development.
Okay, this is to enter into a bond agreement. Again, no, nothing new here, very straightforward. Any questions, comments?
This is where they're putting a piece of property.
Yes, yes, it is.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to new business, Ben, could you please read ordinance sixty-five dash twenty-two?
An ordinance amending Chapter seven oh five designated outdoor refreshment area of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton to reflect recent changes in state law.
All right, Daryl.
Ben has summarized this well. Recent changes in state law have brought us to amend our ordinance in three areas, seven oh five point oh one, seven oh five point oh three, seven oh five point oh four. Probably the most significant amendment you will find in seven oh five oh one, in which the boundaries of the DORA are specifically enumerated by address. We'll see that. There is a second change in seven oh five oh three on the DORA regulations, that is from item C, which talks about DORA cups. And then finally, there is a slight change in seven oh five oh four B, which talks about, inserts alcohol-free special event into the language. So again, this is just a little bit of housekeeping for our DORA program and to align it with state law. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to adopt the first reading.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, could you please read Resolution sixty-six dash twenty-two?
A resolution submitting amendments to Chapter eleven twenty-five definitions, specifically Division eleven twenty-five point oh two A twenty-five driveway private residence and to Chapter eleven thirty-three point zero eight single-family and two-family residential district regulations, specifically subsection eleven thirty-three point oh eight C additional regulations for garages, parking areas, driveways, and vehicles of the city of North Canton zoning code for consideration in accordance with Chapter eleven eighty-one of the codified ordinances and declaring the same to be an emergency.
All right, Daryl.
Okay, this came out of a zoning board of appeals meeting, I think one of Mr. Matheny's constituents was looking for a paving option that came up, was less expensive than cement or asphalt. And this is a more environmentally sound approach. It lends itself, I think, to do-it-yourself projects, if you would. So it takes some of the labor cost out of it. And the materials probably are, a square foot probably slightly less expensive than asphalt or concrete. It would also allow us, I think, to offer residents who have boats or trailers or something stuck in a yard, allow us to clean that up a little bit as well. So this is a pretty good approach. I happen to be over in Massillon the other night and drove by Progressive Chevrolet, and by golly, on the west side of their, their parking lot up on the hill, they've got this material, and that's where they park some of their cars for, for display. So I think it's pretty good. Mr. Matheny, you have anything to add?
It's, it's actually, it's a very good deal, environmentally friendly. It puts that water back into the ground instead of into our sewer systems, where we've had challenges this past year. The other part of this is that the apron will always remain as a concrete apron.
Yes.
Keeping the gravel out of our.
Twelve feet.
Our sewer system, so I think it's a positive step. And like Daryl said, it offers options to concrete and asphalt that will still remain aesthetic and environmentally friendly. I think we need to do this to go, we need to get the public hearings done, we need to hear from the rest of the residents and move it forward.
Yeah, I think, you know, if I might add, I'm sorry to.
I'm done.
I think the other thing is this, is that let's understand that this conversation came up through the administration. It's an example of listening, not being rigid, but attempting to adjust our ordinances to residents' needs. And it was accomplished, I think, without a great deal of gnashing of teeth. It's good. So your constituents.
We'll make a motion that we pass Resolution sixty-six.
I will second that.
Two, two.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I move we suspend the rules.
Second.
Which rule?
Oh, I can read it here.
Oh, excuse me.
Can I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings?
Three readings. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Do we need to have a emergency on this?
So zoning regulations cannot be adopted on emergency. What, your adopting emergency tonight is just the resolution submitting the zoning amendment for consideration. So, working with the planning commission clerk, I told them this was coming, you know, two weeks ago, gave them all paperwork. They are being very gracious and allowing us to get this on the October meeting, assuming you pass it.
Great.
Okay, thank you. This is a point of order, this is, has an emergency clause in it, or short one. If you're going to vote no, this will fail.
Okay.
So, I've made, I've made a motion to suspend the rule requiring three readings.
I second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution sixty-six dash twenty-two under suspension of the rules?
Revolts moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Ben, could you please read ordinance seventy dash twenty-two?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to prepare and submit an application to the National Natural Resources, Resource Assistance Council for a grant for the acquisition of property north of Stradivant Drive and, if awarded, authorizing the mayor upon Board of Control approval to enter into an agreement for the receipt of said grant and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Okay, Daryl.
I think this is self-explanatory, aligns with our development efforts. At this time, if there aren't any additional questions, I will make a motion, we adopt the first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council requesting, requiring three readings?
Revolts moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance seventy dash twenty-two under suspension of the rules?
Revolts moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, could you please read Resolution seventy-one dash twenty-two?
A resolution to proceed and declaration of official intent to finance the purchase of major equipment to be purchased in twenty twenty-two with a maximum principal amount expected to be financed of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and declaring the same to be an emergency.
We talked about last weekend, this is the dome for the salt. We have to look far and wide for this, so I move to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings?
Revolts moves.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution seventy-one dash twenty-two under suspension of the rules?
Revolts moves.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, could you please read ordinance seventy-two dash twenty-two?
An ordinance to approve and adopt current replacement pages to the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton.
Yeah, we went over this last week, some housekeeping. It's just an annual update of our traffic and criminal codes to reflect the changes in the state law. You'll see the eight changes here. Any questions or? So I'll make a motion. Pass these.
Question to adopt.
Or, motion to adopt, I guess.
Second.
Can we do that?
Sorry.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
You, you have a motion and a second?
Oh, okay, gotcha. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, could you read the ordinance seventy-three dash twenty-two?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to enter into an agreement with the Stark County Commissioners for the use of community development block grant funds on the Valley Drive Northwest Waterline Replacement Project and declaring the same to be an emergency.
All right, Gina, formerly rubbish utilities committee?
There you go. Yes, so we have talked about this in committee, so this is, we have the grant money thanks to Rob to, to do this project, which will be on Valley Drive. I don't know that we have any more information to really add to this for this waterline replacement, Patrick, do you? So unless there's any further discussion, I, I would move that we adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Kind of a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, can I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance seventy-three dash twenty-two under suspension of the rules?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Department reports. Patrick?
Who report?
Gina?
I'm just looking at the August finance report, I just wanted to make a couple notes. I know in September that they'll be quarter end, so you'll have more information with the check register and the quarterly reports. But at the end of August, income tax was up by twelve and a half percent, so that continues on a steady increase over last year. Our investments, we remain invested at eighty-three percent. We're actually getting together to have our portfolio review this week, so I'll include that with your quarterly report as well. And I just also wanted to let you know the Finance Department and Administration Department is still working on the twenty twenty-three budget preparation. We are also working on updating the Open Gulf portal, so the transparency and budget portal will be much more aesthetically pleasing and hopefully easier to navigate and have even more information on there. So we're just continuing to build that, should be ready within the next month or so.
Great. Mayor?
Yes, thank you, President Astoria. Ms. Baumann, thank you for your comments and support today with what you stated, thank you very much, it's greatly appreciated. And hopefully people are noting the advancements and progress the city is making. I had the opportunity to be out and about in the public with the member Orr and, and member Matheny covered some things for us, so I'm going to yield my time to them and also working with something with Jamie McLeaster, member McLeaster, on some events that happened in the city. So I'll yield my time to those three council members to share some of the good things that we are involved in. So thank you very much, President Astoria.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Ben?
I have nothing from my department, but I have been asked to make a passionate plea to all of you and the public at large that the Chamber of Commerce is having the first annual New Berlin Festival.
Oh, yes.
And they greatly need volunteers to help make it happen. So if you are available on December eighth, please consider.
October eighth.
October eighth, sorry. Please consider volunteering, there is a link to sign up on their website. We shared it on our Facebook page today, it's on the Facebook event page.
Thank you, council reports. Jamie?
Well, just to dovetail in, you know, this sounds like it's going to be an absolutely fantastic event, and I know I for one am disappointed that the sausage throwing contest is, has been, all the spots have been filled. So I'm going to be left as a participant only, so. Mayor kind of touched on something that actually, so, member Orr, the mayor, and I went on, on September seventeenth to Price Park for the Nimitchelin Creek Watershed Partners Creek Leap. And forgive me, because I cannot remember what leap stands for, I think it's a litter elimination something.
And prevention.
And prevention, there, see, it had to be that simple. So this was a great event, so there was probably, you know, I, I'm not good at counting crowds, but I would guess there's probably forty, forty-five people there. And I think in talking to the mayor, there was even more people there, yes, Mr. Mayor?
Correction, eighty.
Eighty, okay, there were eighty people there, so. And actually, one of the things I thought was great is, is that these weren't, a lot of these people weren't even from our community. So this is something that the Nimitchelin Creek Watershed Partners does every September. They find a different creek, they've been down by the McKinley Museum, who is one of the sponsors, they've been, they, in fact, in thinking about it, I had actually done it through another organization years ago when they cleaned up Mother Goose Land, and I was reminded, I think that was approximately ten years ago maybe, but. But at any rate, it was just, it was a great event, pulled some trash out of the creek. My son, I took my son with us, he had a blast, and he said, "Dan, thanks for taking me, I, I want to do that again sometime." So, but I just want to publicly thank the Nimitchelin Creek Watershed Partners, Stark Soil and Water was also there, NEFCO, Stark Parks, McKinley Presidential Library and Museum, Marathon Petroleum, Kent Stark, Walsh University, and Stark State all had either students or representatives there assisting in a day. So it was a great event, and I have nothing else to share this evening.
Yes, sir.
Great.
David?
I have a few things that I'd like to cover, and some of them are in different places here, so bear with me as I go slowly. But first thing I'd like to cover is last week. The mayor had other obligations, and I was privileged enough and honored to do a dedication at the Dogwood Park. And it was a bench in honor of Dean Ferguson, and he had passed away a year ago, the twenty-second, and the dedication was on the twenty-first. But it was, it was put there by a gracious gift from Holate Love, and was actually even supported by Dean Ferguson's brother-in-law, Shannon Bragg, at the company that he works for, the real estate company that he works for, had made a donation to Holate Love, so they could provide that. Dean's sister, Monica, was there, friends and family, and we got to do the dedication. The benches aren't cheap, they're very expensive, they're designed to last for many, many years. This is one of, hopefully, several more benches that will come and be dedicated, giving an opportunity for parents to sit and watch as their kids play and enjoy that. And there's a great tie-in between Holate Love and what they do for the community, for those individuals that. those individuals that are needed, that are disabled and have special needs. And on the bench is a QR code, so people can sit there on the bench, they can check the QR code, and it takes them to their mission. And they both tie in so well, what the city is doing with the park and the children and the things that they need and what they're doing in the community. So great tie-in there. It was an honor and a privilege for me to do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being busy that night so that I could do that. The next thing I wanted to bring up is, you know, we're coming up with, mind me why I moved my pages here. Fire Prevention Week is coming up in October, and our... It's okay, I'm bringing this up, so that'll be fine. Our fire department, Station One, is going to hold an open house on October 10th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. So we have one of the best fire departments around, and this gives them an opportunity to deploy their equipment. There's going to be some hoses for the kits to spray, some demonstrations, that type of thing that are taking place during Fire Prevention Week. So looking forward to that.
What date was that?
That is October 10th. From 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. So I had an opportunity this past weekend to attend a charity event, and it was for Light After Loss. September is, you know, Suicide Prevention Month, and that affects a lot of people, and it's heartbreaking to have that happen or to be affected by that. So to participate in that charity event was, was, was great to be a part of and to participate. We also have someone else to recognize, Officer Michael Mayo.
Maylie.
Maylie, I'm sorry. Did that again. That's okay. He, on September 19th, he received a lifesaver accommodation ribbon from Chief Kemp for actions that took place during a call in August. Officer Maylie was there on time to help stop what could have been a potential suicide. And his quick response and his actions saved a life. And maybe, maybe his actions were the turning point in this individual so that they can see that there is opportunity and there is help that can be provided for them, because suicide is such a major impact in our entire community and in this world right now. There's a lot of things that are going on. So thank you to the Police Department, to Officer Maylie, for being there and being on time. It just goes to testimony that we do have great people working in the city of North Canton that are concerned for the welfare of our residents. That's my report.
All right. Thank you. Stephanie?
Stephanie, you were at the Light After Loss. My friend volunteered, and her, the founder of that, she was a very dear friend of, and it was a very nice event yesterday. So it just kind of goes to what I was going to say about so many community events being back on and so many organizations needing support and attention. After a couple of years of not having events, you can find really something to support, whatever your passion area is, really every weekend and even throughout the weekdays. So I'm excited to kind of get back out there and start attending those events. We were at the McKinley Museum, made a disco party. Terrell, you weren't there?
No.
Terrell serves on the board with my husband. But just when you think about, and it goes to Miriam's point, I guess, that's why I wanted to bring this up, is there are so many great things going on, really in our community as a whole. And it was really neat for her to recognize and see as she drives up Main Street and goes to the various subdivisions, you know, what she sees that we're doing and the importance of taking that time to really make sure we're making the right steps here and not having to worry about some of the nonsense. So I really appreciated her saying that. But yeah, a lot about there, we're doing a lot of good things. That's it.
All right. Thank you. John?
Well, it was a busy week, started last Tuesday. Matt and I took a walk from, what, Knoll to the city limits there, 50th Street. It was really an eye-opener for us. We saw some things that, you know, probably will be done in the future, some of the things could be done right now. Patrick, thank you for getting the radar turned back on and get that reset, because the cars were flying, flying down Cleveland Avenue there. And it was quite a, quite a, quite an education by one of the constituents there. He lived in probably one of the oldest houses in North Canton. I think the middle section was 1850, and it's a 7,000-square-foot house back off Magnolia. Kind of a neat thing, it was all part of the Hoover Farm. So we did that. And then on, I think it was Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday, Gina, great job. You and Patrick did a nice job on the budget review, really was quite educational. I think most of the council's been through it, and they would say the same thing. So thank you so much. I learned a lot there and a lot of stuff to take home with that. So thank you so much. Saturday, I participated with the mayor and Christine, Christina was out there too. She, she did the walking. The mayor and I sat on the city hall there, and I was as a councilman, and he was doing the mayor, and we had a lot of people from all over. About 50% of the people were from North Canton, I would say, and the others came as far as, what, Dover, New Philly, Waynesburg, Pittsburgh, and Australia?
We had one visiting, her sister from Perth, Australia. So the sisters were walking. But we had people from Lake and Green and Canton South, Louisville, and some of these were repeat. They looked forward to that event for an afternoon, so it was very rewarding.
Really good. We stayed there the whole time, gave out high-end candy. That was a real good thing. That's about all I have, but again, thank you guys and gals.
Thanks, John and Terrell. I think the administration deserves a round of applause for the successful demolition of the Spitzer property and the clearing of that site. That was achieved with assistance of Terry Moore at Krugliak, our legal counsel. I think it's important for our constituents to understand that the city will improve the intersection, it won't include a roundabout, as I've heard, but the intersection will be, have an extra lane added. The property remains in the hands of the owners, who will then have an opportunity to develop it in a fashion consistent with our new Main Street zoning. If you look across the street, you will notice that the facade is up and on the Debold Expansion. That progress, they're making excellent progress there, and things are coming together in that neglected quadrant of Charlotte and Main. So again, I think we've made significant progress, and the credit, frankly, rests with the administration on driving bold projects. So Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
What does it mean in bigger terms? For our finance director, she knows that more jobs need more income tax revenue. And that is, that's what pays for patrolman Maylie, EMS, the fire. We need that. And I think somewhere, sometimes, many times, our constituents just think it comes from a grant. No, it doesn't. Somebody's got to pay for it. But that's why I think constantly working, as the administration does, and Patrick's done on the economic development front, looking for opportunities to bring new jobs and growth, capital investment to the community is critically important. Patrick, that building at Debold is worth, I want to say 10, but I may be a little light.
I think 10 is a good number.
10, we think it's worth about $10 million. So that's, that's of a size that's comparable valuation to Akron Children's, which in terms of tax revenue is worth about a quarter of a million dollars a year. And it's important to understand that that project was, was done without real estate tax incentive. So it's moving right along, and we can keep our fingers crossed and hope that the owners of the Spitzer site will have grand visions and provide employment and capital investment to that corner. That's my report.
Mayor, you wanted to...
If I may interject, President, before your time, just want to make a clarification. I know many of us consider that property, the Spitzer building, that was the last company there, but please be advised, it's owned by a family, and it was just that Spitzer occupied that, so it's not the Spitzer building. I do not want to disparage the name of Spitzer, because they were an employer in the city and had a business here, so just want to make...
The property is owned by the Browns.
Okay, thank you.
Least two Spitzer.
The Brown family owns that for over 100 years, so... But when I was talking with Kevin recently, he says, "Mayor, could you just make a point of clarification?" I said, "Certainly, Kevin, I will." And one other item, if I may dovetail, I had the opportunity to make a presentation to Cindy Morrow, and Cindy Morrow was the visionary leader, along with Linda Lippert, who formed the Wishes Can Happen organization. And they celebrated their 40th anniversary this year. And so their board decided, when we surprised her this Saturday, right here, in their, in their program, they had over 500 people here, families and young people, all kinds of activities, but we surprised her with a bench, okay, in her honor, and she was very well overwhelmed by that. So again, the, our parks and our, our bench recognition program has been well-received. But, you know, Cindy Morrow is right here from North Canton. She started that organization here. And they've reached almost 2,000 families in granting wishes to children with life-threatening illnesses. So I just want to make a follow-up comment to dovetail what member Matheny said. So the future is bright for us. And by the way, John and I both handed out a number of the pamphlets that we have for, to people that were coming through the Choppin Walk to see, you know, if they would like to, you know, recognize a loved one or someone that way too. So anyways, thank you very much for the extra two minutes.
Okay, I don't have too much. I want to thank Patrick and Gina for the budget meeting. I appreciate the depth and the time that you guys have spent in that. It's incredible, so thank you. I'm sure everybody has appreciated those meetings.
I think even, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but just looking back from how we did it before, so many years ago, and for those of you that weren't here, we would be talking about it, and then a random question would pop up. And so if that happens, now that is on you, because you have been given the information, you have the time to look ahead, and I guess that's the final share, I just want to make sure that you get all your answers beforehand, so that that isn't something that we need to debate, or Gina has to find, I know before, not that you've been embarrassed, but you've been like, "Okay, I don't have that information right now. I have to go back and get it. I can't just wave a wand and, you know, try to get that." So I appreciate that individual times and any questions that we had. So I'm sorry about that.
Oh, no problem. No, I appreciate it. Yeah, there will be no surprises.
Right.
I wanted to thank Miriam for the positive comments. It was very nice, very detailed. And then buy and support local. The upcoming meetings calendar, on October 3rd, we have a committee of the whole. October 10th is a regular city council meeting, and that will be open topic for recognition of the public. October 17th will be a committee of the whole, and October 24th will be a regular city council meeting. And then October 31st is the holiday, Halloween and Fifth Monday.
Is Halloween, is for a city, is it on that day?
No. It is going to be, we're going to work with the county, again, Stark County Commissioners, and they've designated 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Sunday, October 30th, for Halloween.
Okay. Thank you. It's good to know.
We go back to October 10th. I will not be able to attend council that night, I'll be in Charlottesville. So I wanted to give everyone a heads up on that.
And I think I sent you an email as well. I will be out of state for...
That's on the 10th as well?
Yes.
Yeah, we will. I think we're going to have to on that. Okay. All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry on.
I want to ask you something, but I don't know. You got to grab them first. Is that Rule 37 Amendment passed now? I know, that's it. You don't need to go through the three readings with the...